This meeting of City Council is adjourned. Gentlemen, please remember your hats and everyone will be entitled to the office for standing in緯序. No disruptive behavior or offense will be tolerated and violated or subject to injunction and hostile prosecution. The City Council of Socorro is now ready, caballeros. Please take off your jackets, sombreros, and all of you please put on silent all electronic equipment. No further or any other type of illegal or criminal behavior. Anyone who violates these regulations will be charged and may be prosecuted.
Six oh one, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Cazena, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establish manual court.
Rene Rodriguez, Cesar Nevaras.
Here.
Ralph Turan.
There.
Mayor Elia Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez, Cesar Nelson, and Ivan Colombia, Lobo.
Here.
Item number four, public comment.
Marian Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
Last meeting, at the special meeting, I wasn't very nice to City Council, but I should have appraised the City of Socorro because all the staff, I believe, are doing a great job. I have heard great things about Alejandra's grants from people, different people around the county. They're asking me who you are and just praising you. Of course, Victor's doing great stuff with all the public events, Ms. Rodarte, Ms. Navarro, Mr. Medina. Everyone's doing a great job. So I did want to point that out, that the City of Socorro staff, Mr. Terrazas, doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate that as a constituent. Mr. Navarro, the reason I got on council last time was because there was two meetings that were unfortunately canceled. I'm just telling you because I know you weren't here at the special meeting.
I knew what went on.
I'm sorry?
I knew about it.
Oh, okay. So I'm just mentioning it because it is, well, that's why I talked about it last time. So anyway, I wanted to talk good about the city. The chief of police and all the police department doing a great job. Over the weekend, I came over to the police department, and I didn't catch the officer's name, but he dealt with three different people. There was a bit of a wait time, but, I mean, it's a Saturday, and people had their, had to do their reports thoroughly. So I believe we're doing a good job. There was a speedometer sign placed on Stockyard again, in the very same intersection, Sierra Azul and Stockyard, which is appreciated, but some cars and four-wheelers are using it as a, to see how fast they can go. They're using it as their own personal speedometer to see how fast they can go. So I wonder what else we can do about that, but I was talking to the police about that, just calling it in, making sure we're reporting every incident. Other than that, oh, I got really excited when I saw Mr. Medina's item number seventeen about the code of ordinances. I thought there was going to be a lot more different changes to ordinances. I understand that the ones that he's proposing are very necessary, but I thought they were going to be more about the actual codes that pertain to subdivisions. But I'm glad that that's happening, but I hope that we're continuing moving forward to that. Thank you.
Ivan Colombia, Lobo.
Good afternoon, council. I just wanted to clarify some of the comments Mrs. Cruz made last time at public hearing. Sometimes we make comments that are not true, and they fall upon us, councilpeople. Yes, there was two meetings that were missed because council people were either in training and not sure why one of the other council persons did not show up, so we didn't have enough at that time, but I wanted to clarify that we were, two of you were in training. The last meeting, I was not able to attend on time. My son had a car accident right before I came here, so I had to be where he was at. I did show up and realized there was no meeting. So I wanted to clarify that, that sometimes we have things in our lives that keep us from coming to the meeting on time or keep us from attending. And the reason we did a Wednesday, last, a special meeting on Wednesday, was because that's the time that we could all get, or most of us could get here at that time. I know that I had a wedding to go to on Thursday and Friday, and that's one of the reasons we could not have it on a Thursday. So I wanted to clarify that, too. And I also wanted to clarify that we no longer have R3s, and I know that we were, it was stated by another ex-councilperson that we had, the reason some of the issues we had were because of the R3s, and I wanted to state here publicly that we no longer have R3s. And that was it. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mayor, for the record, Mr. Perez arrived to the meeting at six oh six, and the attendance of Commissioner Vince Perez. And Mr. Rene Rodriguez at six oh seven.
Do we have any other speakers?
Those were all the speakers.
Item number five, presentation by city manager regarding March's 2019 monthly report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I will provide you a couple highlights for our departments in the month of March. So the Socorro Municipal Courts collected ninety-five thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-three, received two-hundred-and-seventy-one citations from Socorro Police Department, eight citations from the Department of Public Safety, and thirty-six ordinance violations. The HR Department celebrated the March birthdays and anniversaries. On March twenty-ninth, the employee of the month was Rosio Inijosa from Recreation's Department. There was no civil service meeting for the month of March. We had two separations from PD Dispatcher and Mr. Nahera from Planning and Zoning. There was no new hires in March. Our Parks and Public Works Department did neighborhood cleanups on Holman, Alba Margarita, Santa Paola, Escalante, Madison Lee, Buford, Apodaca, and Kendrick. Maintenance for ponds, Rosa M. Richardson, Kirkland, Ethel Hart, and Lori Jolene. Picked up four deceased animals throughout the city. Replaced guardrail on Bovi and Zebu. Assisted the Lower Valley Water District with a community cleanup and tire amnesty on March twenty-third. They continued to mow and groom all city parks and ponding areas. Our Police Department received two-thousand-and-fifty-six calls for service in the month of March. There was, the K-9 conducted nine stops leading into three arrests. Officers continued to attend trainings to keep them in compliance with certifications of TICLO requirements. Our City Clerk Department prepared agendas for meetings March seventh and March twenty-first. Received twenty-seven open records requests, responded to nineteen. Prepared six publications, public hearings for adoption of ordinances four fifty-seven and four fifty-eight, and four for the Texas Community Development Grant. Our Planning and Zoning Department collected forty-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, issued two-hundred-and-thirty-nine permits, two-hundred-and-sixty-five registrations, nine applications, and thirty-eight letters. Our code enforcement swept the following areas: the Socorro Grant Track Seven, North Loop Acres, Grijalva Gardens, and Gerduv. There was a hundred-and-nineteen notice of violations that were issued, twenty-eight eighty-two complied, fifteen citations were issued. Recreation's Department had their senior citizens Marty Graff potluck luncheon on March the fifth, Centro San Vicente press conference on the kickoff of services opening on March eleventh, attended Deputy Herrera's funeral services, prepared for the Easter extravaganza. There was no Historical Land Commission meeting in the month of March, Texas A&amp;M Health Fair on March thirtieth. They also kept up with all social media platforms and media inquiries. Our IT Department completed the Fusion Network implementation, the Office three sixty-five migration, and troubleshooted all IT-related issues for all city departments. Our Grants Department submitted the fiscal year twenty-twenty of the Local Border Security Program grant, completed and submitted for the MS four annual report to TECQ, developed of the Stormwater Management Program, and continued to work with various departments for grant assistance. And these are highlights. I don't know if you all have any questions, concerns. Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion? Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia, Lobo.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, public hearing of ordinance number four fifty-one, amendment number one, amendment increase fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-three dollars. Six twelve, public hearing is now open.
I briefly looked, Marian Cruz, I briefly looked at the backup, and I wasn't really sure, I couldn't really tell what the amendment meant, and I was hoping that you all would present something before you opened public hearing so that constituents could get an idea as to what was this increase for, where it was coming from, is it being transferred from a different funding source, all that information. I'm just wondering, and I can't talk about it if I don't have that information. So again, I just ask if council can provide some more information, more than just even what's in the backup, a little bit more of an explanation before opening up for a public comment. Thank you.
Six thirteen, public hearing is now closed. Item number sixteen, second reading and adoption of ordinance number four fifty-one, amendment number one, amendment increase fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-three dollars.
Motion to approve the resolution, second, for the increases. And if we can just have a summarization of the, of the reasons why we have the resolution, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. So we go through different budget amendments throughout the year because we move money around from departments. Sometimes there are things that come up or settlements that come up that require a budget amendment. For the city manager's page that you see there, you can see that we're increasing our budget by six thousand one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, and we're decreasing it by eight-hundred-and-fifty. The reason for this increase is, if you notice, on the ADA modifications for front desk, there was a situation that occurred where we need to make modifications to our front desk, and that presentation will be presented to you next meeting, but we're already allocating funding for those modifications. Also, when we budget, when we start budgeting in June, we don't receive the experience modifier for our workers' comp, our property insurance. So you'll see most of the adjustments are on those insurances that we didn't have enough funds because our rates go up every year, okay? Our second department is our Public Works Department. That one was, we had a bulldozer repair that cost us twenty-eight thousand dollars, so we just moved money around. As you can see, we increased the budget by fifty-two thousand four hundred, and we decreased it by eighty-two thousand five hundred. And that's due to salary savings or from other areas that we can take money away and make sure that we implement them where we need the funding. We have the Police Department. The overtime was increased for fifty thousand dollars, and that's just due to the need of officers because of the shortage that we have. It also, we needed new software. We did receive a new chief of police, and we rebranded our uniforms. I don't know if you were able to tell, now they're black instead of the dark blue, and that was just a rebrand that in an initiative to kind of change the image of the department. We also had an induction ceremony last Friday, and we needed funding since we hadn't allocated funding for that, and that is for our Police Department. And if you can see there, we increased the budget by eighty-six thousand six hundred and decreased it by eighty thousand. Our municipal courts, they just switched money around. They needed increase in postage, so they, postage, and they needed a new computer. So if you can tell, we decreased the budget, we increased it by two thousand six hundred and seventy and decreased it by two thousand nine hundred. Our Planning and Zoning Department, we made some changes there. Again, you'll see property insurance and liability insurance, workers' comp, deferred compensation, and you'll, the biggest cost there is the plant review from Dennebaum, because now we are sending our plants for Dennebaum for an engineer to review. So that sometimes gets a little pricey depending on the volume of plants that we're receiving. And for there, you can see we increased it by forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty and decreased the budget by four hundred dollars. The next one is our Grants Department, and that was just funding, we increased the budget by four thousand, decreased it by four thousand two hundred, and that was just for training. She did have to receive training for the MS four permit and also the CDBG grant. If you all noticed, last time, we discussed where we were having issues with the CDBG grant from our last grant writer. Our HR Department, you could see that we increased the budget by fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and decreased it by six thousand four hundred and twenty, and that had a lot to do with the hiring of the chief, where we had to bring the candidates in to interview and all that, so it provided a cost to the city. Our mayor and council's budget was increased by seven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and decreased by two hundred and thirty-four, and that was due to training and some shirts that were ordered and some caps at council's request. City Clerk, the only changes there were just because of the workers' compensation, life insurance, and property insurance. You can see the difference there. And for our Finance Department, just the hit that we had was the central appraisal tax collector. Their fees went up this year, so we had to make sure that we adjusted the payment there. Our Recreation Center, for HLC, Historical Land Commission, this is the first year that we actually had one of our members attend a training with Mr. Reta, so we hadn't allocated funding for that, and that's what we're trying to do for the Planning and Zoning Department, is to make sure that they receive training. And for our IT Department, they just needed to purchase equipment, which is a Surface Pro, in order for them to be able to connect to the network. Do we all have any questions? So overall, we're asking for an increase of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty, but if you all recall, sometimes we go through three different amendments, the very last one we decrease. It's just we try to take a conservative approach at this time, because later on, because of positions that are currently vacant, then we decrease it at the end of the year. But right now, we're just trying to be very conservative.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I mean, mayor. Thank you, mayor. Jim, since we're on the topic of second reading and adoption, to go ahead and amend, right, to add this funding, could we also say that, you know, next time, could we just have another extra sheet, just in layman's terms, to say what were the changes and why? What she just said, just written down, so that our public can understand it a little bit clearer? Because I know that we've done, I've done six budgets, five budgets so far, so I kind of understand it, and I know it's very difficult for our audience to understand, but if we could do it and then just add a little sheet to say, hey, this is why, for example, there's going to be some safer routes to school that we're going to have to, and people are going to understand that we're going to have to come back and amend it, because we are going to be tapped with a twenty percent if we're eligible for those grants. So for further, you know, notification to our constituents, just to have an extra sheet, just to break it down, just to say, hey, this is what it is, this is why, so forth.
I think the answer is, in terms of this ordinance, including in the ordinance procedures for future budget amendments?
Right.
No?
Okay.
We're not there yet, but I think your city manager has ears, and I think she just heard you.
Okay, perfect, yes, because I understand it, and I understand that they, our audience might not, so I was asking if we could just add it into.
Ms. Elos?
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for bringing that up. That is an excellent idea. If we're going to be transparent, let's be transparent, and that's all our constituents are asking, you know. That would be wonderful if you could provide something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, public hearing of an ordinance of the City of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter thirty-six, article three, division three, section thirty-six to two-fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Socorro, Texas, and approving waiver of event perm fees for nonprofit, public, and municipal purposes when authorized by law. Six twenty-two, public hearing is now open. Six twenty-three, public hearing is now closed. Item number eighteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter thirty-six, article three, division three, section thirty-six dash two-fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Socorro, Texas, and approving waiver of event perm fees for nonprofit, public, and municipal purposes when authorized by law.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, members. Mike Mania with the City Planner. So earlier in the year, we brought a petition and actually direction for the staff to introduce an ordinance to waive permits in the interest of nonprofit and municipal services. So what is before you is the ordinance to enact so that we can approve permits in the interest of this ordinance. Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye. And Ivan Colombia, Lobo. Yes.
Item number nineteen.
Ma'am.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Ma'am, at this time, I would like to move up item number thirty, due to that our Commissioner Vince Perez is here to speak on the item.
Do we have a second?
Sec.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Item number thirty, discussion on action to approve support letter to oppose House Bill twenty-two eighty-seven.
Ma'am.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I would like to make a motion to, let me see, to not support a letter of opposition to bill, House Bill twenty-two eighty-seven. The reason why, I'm going to send you, I'm going to give you some copies that I just printed out. Can you pass them along, please? In our backup, in our backup, if you see our backup, I need you to look at what the copies that I'm giving you versus the copy that they sent. Now, if you notice, there are some, there's some amendments that were added to the copy that we were presented so that we could oppose this bill. And one of the things that I, I'm asking not to support, send a letter of support, is because on this, it says, on the amendment, one of the amendments it says, "The Commissioner's Court votes to approve the operations of the authority in the county, and the authority of the county enters into a corporation agreement under section three nine two point zero five nine," which I want to address that when I was reading our backup and the letter, it says that we were going to lose authority, right, and that we were not going to have any say. What I want you to clarify is that if the city, we have the ability to make our own housing authority, I will say, yes, we do. Every municipality in the state of Texas has that authority. But what I want to address and point out is, when we create a housing authority, we have no say in that authority except appointees. So if they decide to put a housing on North Loop and Rio Vista, we have no say. If they want to put another one on the other side, we have no say. We have no other than just to authorize. We don't authorize budgets, we don't, none of that in nature. We just appoint, and that's about it. This is giving authority, and only the authority to county, the El Paso County, and if it goes through, they will be the only county in the state that are going to be able to deny something that will do us harm. And this is what I don't understand is, when you look at the backup and when it was presented, this was already passed. These amendments were already passed, and somebody decided to give us a half of the bill. Why is that? This is, that is our Commissioner, precinct three. He oversees us. He has the ability and the authority that if we don't like something, he's now going to have, and if it passes, is going to be able to deny something that we might not want in our city. And that's some authority that we do not have. But I just have a concern that we're going to send a letter where we were presented half of a truth, and that's why I made the motion that I did, not to approve a letter of opposing, to oppose that bill.
Mr. Benes?
I think, I know we're a little out of order in terms of what we're, about the discussion, but before I consider a second to that motion, I think that we could do a conditional approval or a conditional letter of support, if and when the county would, it's as simple as stating the phrase, votes to approve the operation of the authority in the unincorporated areas of the county. And so that, by definition, would exclude the municipalities. So then, they still would not have the authority to develop a housing or wouldn't have the power to develop a housing authority within any incorporated area.
Okay, can you repeat that?
Yeah. See, the county, for example, they could, for example, develop a, by just adding that simple phrase, unincorporated areas of the county, then that would take from that picture Socorro, San Luis Aro, Horizon, Anthony, I think Anthony is incorporated, all of the cities that have a tax base or that are incorporated. And so at that point, the county wouldn't have that authority to initiate an authority, a housing authority within an incorporated area.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Okay, to answer your question, we're not talking about the county. We're talking about El Paso Housing Authority.
Right.
Having the ability to, we have a dire need.
No name, Senator.
Hold on. We do have a dire need. We don't have any housing.
Yes.
What I'm trying to say is, if this passed, if the bill passes, it's already going to be on the floor. It already passed certain sections, and that's it. What they're asking us is to support a letter to deny this bill. My whole question is, why are we denying something when the people who are asking us for support? Having the ability to, we have a dire need.
No name, Senator.
Hold on, we do have a dire need, we don't have any housing.
Yes.
What I'm trying to say is, if this pass, if the bill passes, it's already gonna be on the floor. It already passed certain sections and that's it. What, what they're asking us is to, to support a letter to deny this bill. My whole question is, why are we denying something when the people who are asking us for support to deny, to oppose this bill, only gives us half of it? When in reality, what they're saying is now that the county, somebody, somebody is gonna have the ability to deny these projects, okay? We don't have that ability. If we do our own housing authority, we don't have that ability. If Horizon decides to do their own, they don't have the authority to deny anything. Nobody has the, the power to deny or to say or to do anything other than just one thing, to appoint the members.
Well, that's right.
Okay, this will give the authority to the county to have that ability to say, no, you're not gonna do it. Our Commissioner's here because if we voice our concern and say, we do not want this to happen in our city, he can deny it and shut it down. The other way around is, one more time, if we even create our own, we don't have that ability. Somebody is going to have the authority to shut it down. So, all I'm, this is why I'm saying that I don't want to, uh, support this letter. It's because, who's behind it? What's the reason? When you just give us a half of the information? When the full information, they already had before. You know? That's one of the issues that I have, is there, somebody's hiding something? Why don't they tell us, why didn't they give us the information to say, hey, well, somebody's gonna have the ability? The letter of recommendation comes from the housing authority of the county. Of the county. And the county is saying, kill this bill. I don't understand why, when the county's gonna be able to have the authority to not let somebody else build if we do not like it. I, I don't get that.
Okay.
Mr. Carlos?
And I, I, you know, this is the first I'm hearing the whole story here right now, or, or, you know, somebody else's point of view. I'd like to just tell everyone, remember, we're voting for the future. So let's think about the future, what we're doing here, what we're gonna vote on. I don't, I don't like having limits, I don't know about you guys, you know? And somebody else coming into our city and doing whatever they want with our city. So, I just wanted to voice that opinion and it's not a vote for just today, it's for the future. So let's be careful.
Commissioner Perez, would you like to state anything?
And just for the record, I'll go ahead and second Mr. Rodriguez's motion.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, Mayor Protem, Perez, and City Manager, Members of Council. Perhaps, I'm sorry, there's a lot of misinformation regarding this, this legis, and I apologize that unfortunately, you're not the only municipality to be put in this position. The city of San Luisario actually voted to oppose this legislation, to my surprise. I actually spoke with the city administrator for San Luisario today. And unfortunately, part of the confusion came from the executive director of the county's housing authority and one of the board members, actually, and actually my appointee, were giving points of opposition to this legislation. And in, in speaking to the city man, the city administrator from San Luisario, she was under the impression that they were speaking for the county of El Paso. But perhaps if I can just put into context this legislation. I took office back in twenty thirteen, January of twenty thirteen. And this was actually the very first piece of legislation that I supported in Austin at the legislature. Part of my frustration when I came into being Commissioner was that, to put it in context, the county, I don't know how this came to be, but there, there exists not only the city of El Paso Housing Authority, but there also exists a housing authority that's, it's not operated by the county of El Paso. It's referred to as the County of El Paso Housing Authority. And we, as the Commissioners, simply appoint the board members to this. But all housing authorities in the United States are federally funded, so we have no budgetary involvement in this. This housing authority in the county is operated out of Fabens. It was established in the nineteen eighties, in approximately nineteen eighty-five. There's one housing complex, they have about eighty-five public housing units, and that was it. When I first took office, all of the board members were from Fabens. There was no representation from any other portion of the county. And this county housing authority is supposed to serve all parts of El Paso County. One of my biggest frustrations, again, not, I represent not only Socorro and San Luisario and Horizon, I also represent the unincorporated territories of Fabens, Torneo, Montana Vista, Awadulce, and all of the homes now east of Loop three seventy-five. Even though this housing authority has been in existence for over thirty years, there is no other public housing units outside of Fabens. Whatever the case may be, I don't know how, how that came to be, but the status quo needed to change. So in two thousand and thirteen, the county supported legislation that was calling for the merger of the housing authorities in the city of El Paso and the housing authority out in Fabens, the county housing authority. There was some opposition from the folks in Fabens. Again, all of the board members were from Fabens. It was, in my opinion, it was sort of viewed as a Fabens Housing Authority. And they were very apprehensive towards the merger. There was a lot of fear mongering and misinformation that was spread to residents. They were telling the residents that if the city of El Paso comes in and merges with this housing authority, the residents in Fabens would be affected. They'd have to go pay their bill in the city of El Paso, people would lose their jobs, a lot of misinformation. The legislation passed. And in the legislation, the original legislation in twenty thirteen, it needed the approval of the county Commissioners Court and the city council of El Paso to approve the merger. As politics would have, Mayor Leacer came into office and had differences with the county judge at the time, County Judge Veronica Escobar. And the city of El Paso did not want to support the merger of, of this, even though their own housing authority was actively pursuing this. So that, so it didn't go anywhere for several years. In twenty fifteen or in twenty seventeen, the legislation had to be amended. Where we saw not, not the approval of the city council, but the approval of the Housing Authority Board and the County Commissioners Court. And over the last couple of years, we've been trying to make that work, trying to make this merger work. Unfortunately, the housing authority in Fabens has been actively lobbying against this bill. Not because I think there's any legitimate concerns regarding any harm that would come. It's just, I think, really out of a very narrow self-interest, out of self-preservation, and that they wanna be the only housing authority to exist. Even though their jurisdiction expands through the entire county, they only have had operations out in Fabens. Unfortunately, in, in January, when, when the new county judge took office, there was a lot of concerns raised regarding the legislation and regarding the merger. Many members of the court expressed concern, and the, the housing authority expressed concern that if the city of El Paso swallowed up the housing authority of El Paso's, or the county's housing authority, the county would then lose oversight, that we wouldn't have any input over housing projects. We would no longer be able to appoint board members to the housing authority. And so in January, the Commissioners Court ultimately decided to not support the legislation. And it was dead. This was five years' worth of, of effort, just died in January. You know, we have to pick our battles, you know, as, as you know. And that was, that was where the issue stood in January. Just ten days ago, and again, sorry, some of the concerns that were raised by the Commissioners were twofold. One, of the impacts that it would have on the existing county housing authority. The impact it would have on residents, the impact that it would have on employees, that, that employees would potentially lose their job. And the fact that the county Commissioners Court would not have any oversight over the, because we would not have any board positions on the city of El Paso's housing authority. Those were the concerns that were raised. Well, ten days ago, Speaker Protem Moody introduced amendments to this legislation, and that was not included in your backup. I don't know if the alderman at large provided, did you provide the, the most recent bill? It was just passed about ten days ago. It took into consideration all of the concerns that were raised, not only by the county housing authority, but by the county Commissioners Court. This legislation now requires, if the city of El Paso is going to do business outside the city of El Paso and in, in the county's jurisdiction, to include Socorro and San Luisario and the unincorporated territories, they now have to present to Commissioners Court a thorough needs assessment detailing the housing that they, they wanna pursue, the need for that housing authority. We, as Commissioners, now then have to initiate a public hearing, where we will then give it an up or down vote. Essentially, this amendment that's before you and that passed the House of Representatives gives us veto authority over every housing development that would be proposed outside the city of El Paso. Personally, it makes me a little uncomfortable that we have that much authority because no city in, in Texas has that authority. No Commissioners Court has that authority to do it. But unfortunately, that amendment was, that, those were the lengths that needed to go to address the concerns of the county housing authority and the Commissioners. And so on Monday, as we got apprised of this amendment, the Commissioners Court ultimately decided it, this amendment addresses the concerns that were raised by some of the Commissioners regarding representation. Because even though we're not getting a seat on the city's housing board, we do have now veto authority. So if there was any housing development that comes in outside the city of El Paso that we're not satisfied with, if you all had concerns, we actually now get to veto that, that housing project. That's an authority that the city of El Paso doesn't have. If you all were to establish a housing authority, you all wouldn't have that authority. Again, I guess, you know, on, on the bright side, there is that additional layer of accountability that exists. Because this amendment satisfied all the concerns that were raised by the county housing authority and the Commissioners Court, the Commissioners Court, just on Monday, voted unanimously to support the legislation. Which was a big development, considering that in January, this legislation, I didn't think was gonna go anywhere. So that's where we stand, is I just wanted you to be aware that the intent of this legislation, again, it's been a five-year effort on my part because, again, I've been frustrated that for thirty years, we've had a county housing authority operating out in Fabens. But yet, you don't have any public housing here in the city of Socorro. We don't have any public housing in, in the city of Horizon. We don't have public housing in the city of San Luisario. The only affordable housing initiatives that exist are those that have been brought forth by private developers. And it's problematic, not, not problematic, but that lack of competition for tax credit housing, so I'm sure you all have had resolutions involving tax credit housing. These private developers are the only ones that are out there pursuing affordable housing options. What's happening in the city of El Paso is that you're seeing a lot of innovative projects that are occurring because the city of El Paso has the capability, they have the resources, they have the leadership in place where they are making substantial investments in tax credit housing. I, I personally am impressed with the, a lot of the infrastructure projects that are going on in the city of El Paso. They're being very innovative in, in the way that they're pursuing these projects, they're being innovative with the funding. When it comes to, they're rehabbing a lot of old infrastructure projects. The Blue Flame Building is a good example. The entire facility is gonna be housing for seniors. And it frustrates me as Commissioner that I see these projects going on in the city of El Paso and there's no activity happening, you know, in Socorro, Horizon, all the areas east of Loop three seventy-five. There's no public housing in Montana Vista, Awadulce, areas of significant need. Even though we have the county housing authority, it is a very small housing authority and does not have the ability to pursue some of the housing options that we see in areas like the city of El Paso. So the intent of this legislation was to harness those resources that are in the city of El Paso to make investments outside the city in areas like Socorro, Horizon, San Eli, and unincorporated territories in Precinct Three. I, I see no downside to this, to this legislation. Especially now with these additional protections that essentially give Commissioners veto authority. If you all have concern about a housing development, you can express those concerns to me. You know, and if we can't resolve them, the project then can ultimately be voted down. Those protections don't exist for other housing authorities in the United States, or certainly in Texas. So I just wanted to share that information with you and, and actually encourage you to, to reach out to Senator Rodriguez, to encourage him to support this legislation. Because I think it'll have tremendous benefit for, for our community that, that has not seen a presence of public housing for over thirty-five years. The housing authority in, in the county of El Paso, you know, I, I personally think that, that they're just seeking to be the only player in this entire area. Even though they don't have the capacity to pursue these tax credit housing options or these tax credit or other housing units outside of Fabens. And it'll probably be several decades before they have that capacity. And, and ultimately, this option that allows the city of El Paso to come in to pursue certain housing projects does not preclude them from pursuing housing options. If you all decide to pursue your own housing authority, you all still have that authority to do so. The city of Horizon and the city of San Luisario also have that, that same authority. But I just wanted to, to clarify the intent of this legislation, that its, its intent is just to enhance public housing here in our communities, that I think where, where there's a significant lack of that. And I'm happy to take any questions. I hope that explains a little bit about the context of this legislation. Again, it was originally intended to be a merger. But again, given the opposition that was expressed by the county housing authority, that's no longer an option. This amendment that's before you allows the county housing authority to exist intact. It's gonna still have an executive director, the Commissioners are still gonna appoint a board. I, I personally think it's a little redundant, I would have preferred the merger, but such is the nature of compromise. And this legislation, again, it just offers the opportunity to create opportunities to, to have additional public housing units here in our community.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Commissioner, I have a couple of questions, but the first one is, does the county have the ability to do housing in Socorro, San Luisario, Horizon? If they're able to with funding?
The, the county housing authority?
Yes.
From, you know, you'd have to speak, I don't wanna speak for them because, again, we're, we're on opposite sides of this issue. But, again, you have to ask yourself, you know, they have been in existence for, for nearly thirty-five years. You know, if they really were concerned about the city of Socorro losing authority in some way, you know, I, I don't know what the contact has been like, but, you know, over the course of thirty years, this new interim executive director, who's currently there, she's never had experience operating a county housing, or a housing authority. You know, I don't know why, I don't know if they've approached you, if they approached the staff or any members of council to say what can be done in the city of Socorro. But, but I think they are such a small county housing authority, it'll be decades before they have that ability to, to build here, here in Socorro.
But giving, if they had the funding, since there are a county housing authority, they can build anywhere in the county, correct?
That's correct. Their jurisdiction extends to you.
That's what I wanted to know. Their jurisdiction, they can put someone in El Paso, in Horizon, in San Luisario, any municipality within the county?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. So, right, they currently actually have some, from my understanding, they have some vouchers, not only in Fabens, but they also have some vouchers in, in the city of El Paso. But again, my frustration has been sort of with the, the, the public housing units, right? I mean, the, the only public housing units that exist are, are in Fabens. And, and I think that's just been unfair to, to the rest of, of the community in Precinct Three.
My, my other question would be, can I do a follow-up question? Because I, I kinda understand this, that's why I wanted to ask some questions since we have our Commissioner here. So, if, if that they have the ability to, then it, it's, it's not stopping them from doing it, except funding. So if, if we, the city, feel that if this bill passes and the city feels that we don't want a housing to be placed on a certain area of our city, we can go to you and, and maybe have the ability to shut it down, correct?
That's correct. And, and I don't think that anybody anticipated an amendment of this scope actually passing. Again, when, when this bill died in January, I thought that was the end of it. But, but this amendment, you know, it, it passed the House, try, in, in an attempt to compromise and address everybody's concerns, gives us that authority.
So my third question, Commissioner, is, Mr. Perez, is if the housing authority of the county would want to come here, we can't voice our, our voice to you to shut it down, correct?
Right, right. So, so ju, just so you're aware, in January, the housing authority expressed the same sort of doom and gloom things to the county Commissioners Court. They said, if, if we allow the city of El Paso to operate in the county, we, as county Commissioners, are gonna lose our voice, we're gonna lose oversight. And, and the county, the city of El Paso's housing authority is gonna operate without any oversight. My question to that was, we currently don't have any oversight over the things that they currently do. And, and that's what I sort of found a little bit bizarre. You know, my wife sits on city council in the city of El Paso, they don't have any oversight over the city of El Paso's housing authority. That authority is reserved for the, the housing authority board. But, but now, you know, again, I think it was to everybody's surprise, the Commissioners now have, have the significant oversight, and I think it's significant for you all because you all have now more input in the process. I, as a Commissioner, have more input than any Commissioner in the state of Texas or any, any municipality. I hope, to, to be honest with you, I, I don't know now, with this amendment, if the city of El Paso will actually go through these steps because it is, to me, it seems a little bit cumbersome that they now actually have to provide a needs assessment, we have to have a public hearing. And I don't know if they're gonna like the fact that, you know, our housing, or that their housing projects are gonna be subject to an up or down vote or to a veto. or that their housing projects are going to be subject to an up or down vote or to a veto. So I hope that this legislation still achieves the desired outcome, which is, you know, increase public housing. I think that this has put unnecessary obstacles in the way. But nonetheless, that's sort of the nature of compromise.
Mr. Duran?
Just need to clarify, when Mr. Rodriguez says you have the ability to veto, is it you personally, or is it the county commissioner?
The county Commissioners Court as a whole, yes, sir. So there has to be a public hearing. We have to initiate a public, just like you all had one here recently for, for the ordinance. We have to open up a public hearing, allow public comment, and then there will be a vote before the Commissioners Court.
The Commissioners Court would vote to deny?
To, to either to vote to approve or deny.
To approve or deny, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And again, that's after a thorough needs assessment. So if the city of El Paso wants to build a development somewhere, or they want to rehab an existing structure, like, like what they're doing in the city of El Paso, they would actually have to provide a thorough needs assessment demonstrating why that housing complex is needed. And that was to address the concerns that were raised by the county's housing authority, where, believe it or not, they said that there's not a significant need for public housing in certain areas. And, and again, you know, given the importance of this bill, I, I would ask, I don't know if you all have the ability to take action today or if it has to be a future agenda item. But, but if you could actually send a letter of support to the Senator strongly encouraging him to support this legislation, that, that would be appreciated. Again, I, I was surprised, again, I thought this legislation was dead in January, but the Commissioners voted unanimously on Monday to support this legislation with this amendment. And I, I think it would be great if you all could do the same. I think, again, there's nothing but an upside to this legislation.
So then, Commissioner Perez, just for my own clarification. Then your request runs contrary to the current motion on the floor?
Mayor Protema does. The, the motion as written is to, to write a letter in opposition. My request would be if you could actually write a letter of support in support of the legislation, not, not in opposition to it. Because again, this amendment was not made available to you in the backup. Because again, this is a relatively new development. The amendment passed about 10 days ago. And, and so it's, it's a fairly new development, and the Commissioners just approved this on Monday.
My one follow-up question, and, and please pardon my, my ignorance on this, but why is it that the, in terms of the city of El Paso, why is there a housing authority, authority so encompassing that it can go beyond or go into other municipalities?
So currently, it, it cannot. And that, that's the, that's the intent of the legislation. Again, originally, we were trying to merge the, the city of El Paso with the county of El Paso for the purpose of giving them jurisdiction outside the city limits of El Paso. So right now, all of the investments that they make are limited to the city of El Paso. And, and as a Commissioner who represents, you know, areas like Socorro and the city of El Paso, it's frustrating for me to see what's happening on one side of the city boundary versus another. I mean, I, I wish that the housing projects there were, were occurring here in, in the city of Socorro, because there's tremendous need out here in Precinct 3. The city of El Paso's housing authority is actually one of the highest performing housing authorities in the nation. I think it's actually the largest housing authority in the state of Texas. And, and a lot of what they're doing now is that there's, there's billions of dollars of infrastructure that's now being built in the city of El Paso, where they're completely rehabbing existing housing units, modernizing them, giving them energy efficiency upgrades. It's, it's, it's a good thing, because, you know, there used to be a stigma towards public housing. And there was a lot of bad public housing developments in many parts of the country. You know, one example is sort of the public housing projects right by, by Bowie High School. It's, it's never a good thing to cluster so many public housing units. And unfortunately, that's sort of my frustration with a lot of these private the developments that have come up here in Socorro and in, and in San Luis Ario. You know, there's not as many guidelines. And, and, and a private developer will come in and cluster a lot of these things. I think in San Luis Ario, there's like five of them that are all clustered together. You wouldn't see that in a housing authority where they, they follow general principles and best practices. And so, so, so the, the, the city of El Paso currently doesn't have this authority. If this legislation passes, it would give them authority, but contingent on Commissioners Court approval. And essentially, one by one, so they're not going to have sort of this carte blanche. They can operate everywhere. Unfor- although I would like for them to have that authority, to be honest with you. Because again, it still wouldn't preclude you all from doing your own housing authority needs if you all choose to. But unfortunately, it's sort of piecemeal now. It's just one by one. If they want to pursue a particular housing project, they have to get authority first to operate outside the city of El Paso.
Well, then, okay, then, along those lines of, of reasoning, and this is just my reason, doesn't mean that it's correct, but in terms of your issue of carte blanche, wouldn't, has a notion, or was the notion ever considered of developing a housing authority, a regional housing authority, that would include the smaller municipalities along with a county and have that voting power as a regional block so that we can control what kinds of developments occur within the area?
Well, yes, sir. Well, well, the intent of the merger was to create a version of that. You know, we felt that the easiest way would, would be to allow the city of El Paso's housing authority just to assume the responsibilities. And, and yes, one of the, one of the concerns raised by other Commissioners, it wasn't raised by me, because I, I thought it was, you know, the more efforts we could have, I thought it would be a good thing. But that was some of the concerns, was that Commissioner Leon, in particular, requested that the county have two seats on the city of El Paso's housing authority, effectively creating what, what I guess you would consider a regional housing authority.
Because you've got to understand that as a small municipality, even with the county having, with all due respect, having that authority, there is, who's to say that we're not, we're not going to be steamrolled on a project?
Right. And, and, yes, sir. And, and you bring up a valid point. I think there's always the potential to, to, to look at the negative and, and say, well, what happens if, you know? But I just don't see the justice.
We've got history about being steamrolled.
And, and the city of San Luis Ario raised the same concern, you know, because, you know, they have, like, like you all, we have a lot of interlocal agreements, as does the county with the city of El Paso.
Right.
Right? And this is different in the sense of, well, we're, we're not involved in an interlocal agreement. This does not involve any funding locally. Funding does not come from, all of this is federally funded. But, but, but yes, there is that concern of steamrolling. But, but under this amendment, I feel very confident, comfortable that that's just not, they're, they're not going to be able to do that now. They're going to have to provide a needs assessment to the Commissioners Court. If there was something in that, you know, that was of concern to the city of, of Socorro, you know, that there's certainly now a forum where that can be raised during that public hearing opportunity. You, if, if you all feel strongly and wanted to do a resolution in opposition, you have that, that unique authority under this amendment. We don't have that currently with the County Housing Authority. Like, again, the city of El Paso doesn't have that authority. It's, it's sort of unique to us, and, and so...
Because it might even be beneficial for the smaller municipalities to have a seat at the table when you all convene as, 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 as a joint body. If, if the merger does take place, you know, it would be nice that the city of Socorro, Horizon, Anthony would have a seat at the table. And I think that's doable now, if, if at all possible, I mean...
Right. And, yes, sir. I, I hear your concerns. But just to be clear, the, the whole concept of the merger is now moot, because we could not get the support to merge them. So, so now, what this amendment does, it allows the County Housing Authority to still maintain operations. It just allows the city of El Paso to operate outside of the city of El Paso, so that they can make investments in public housing. But again, now it has the additional step of, of making them get the approval from that. So, so that's where the, it's sort of the governance issue becomes, although we couldn't get the representation on the board, I think what we have actually is a little bit better than that, because we now actually get to sort of veto projects that may come.
I guess, and I apologize, I don't mean to monopolize. I guess, in, in the long term, my concern would be that if and when Socorro is in a position to have its own housing authority, that, that we would have that sovereignty to be able to do that and not be, you know, for whatever reason, not be allowed to do our own stuff in our own city.
Yes, sir. And, and just to be clear, and this is where I think a lot of some of the misinformation comes in, because, you know, it says that it would, it would take away, there'd be no oversight. You all still retain all abilities to, if you all want to formulate, I, I'm not an expert when it comes to public housing, but if you all want to formulate your own public housing authority, I think all municipalities have that ability. There's actually a housing authority in the city of Anthony that, that operates, in addition to the city of El Paso and the County Housing Authority. So that, I think that's the, the beauty of this, of this amendment. It doesn't tread on anybody, just, just because the city of El Paso is operating doesn't mean that it's exclusive operation. The County Housing Authority is still going to exist. If the cities of Socorro, Horizon, San Luis Ario wanted to create their own housing authority, they can do that as well. Again, my, my position as Commissioner is just that, you know, it's been 35 years and we haven't had any movement. I, I'd like there to be some efforts, you know, to make immediate investments if possible. And again, the benefit of this is that, you know, we, we have significant oversight over it.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Mr. Duran?
With regard to income-based housing, would the county commissioners have veto power over any of those that the city of Socorro may want to put in?
Income-based housing in the sense of?
For developments, apartment developments that they've come to Socorro.
So for like the tax credit housing?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So, so any, if, if, if the city of El Paso wanted to pursue that, the Commissioners Court would have the veto authority over that. So, so what I'm saying is, is that if, if there was a, some potential development where you all felt very strongly, and you all wanted to submit a resolution, I mean, obviously, that's going to weigh heavily on my decision. I mean, why, why would I, you know, as, as you're the Commissioner who represents the city of Socorro, approve something that, that you all don't want in your own municipality?
Well, no, because we've had them, they've come in and they've asked for, or, you know, for zoning and all that, to put these in. And we voted for them, or, or if we vote for or against them. But say we vote for them and County Commissioners Court decides they don't want those, will you have that ability to, to veto something that we have wanted?
Unfortunately, I mean, yes, the Commissioners would have that authority.
So we're giving up, we're giving up the authority to, for what happens inside the city of Socorro?
Well, I, I think if, well, I, I think if there's, hopefully, the, at least the way that I envisioned that this is working out, if, if there was a potential tax credit housing development that was being proposed for the city of, of Socorro, obviously, your support would carry a lot of weight with the Commissioners Court. And, and I can't, I mean, again, as your representative on the Commissioners Court, I can't imagine a situation where, I mean, I would want to vote contrary to something that's in your municipality.
Yeah, but the county commissioners as a whole?
The county commissioners, right. And, and so that, I'm speaking for myself. But again, if, if there was, let's say, for example, a resolution of support in favor of what was being done, I can't imagine the Commissioners Court saying, no, we're not going to do it. I mean...
I, I just have a little problem with giving up our authority to decide what happens in the city of Socorro to the Commissioners Court.
Right. Well, just to be clear, there isn't anything currently that, that, that you're giving up, that you're trading, right? Right now, currently, if the County Housing Authority decided to apply for a tax credit, if they had the capability to, which they will, probably, this, one of their oppositions is like, well, they want to be able to do it. If they had the authority to do it, there is no mechanism for, for your, your all's involvement. The county's housing authority would be able to approve that tax credit housing, at least from my understanding, would be able to approve that tax credit housing. And we, as the Commissioners, don't have any veto authority over their operations. Just like the city of El Paso, if, whenever the HSEP, the city of El Paso's housing authority, wants to do a tax credit housing, like the Blue Flame or Art Space or others that have been done downtown, the city of El Paso can't. So there's really nothing that you're giving up. There, there's, and I, I would argue that the, the, this sort of veto authority now is actually gives you more of a voice. It gives all of us collectively more a voice, because we typically don't have the opportunity to veto those things. I hope that makes sense, but, but there's nothing that you're trading off. You're, you're not giving up anything. You're actually gaining something that, that you previously didn't have. But i- if the County Housing Authority wanted to do the same thing, I don't think that you'd have the opportunity to veto something like that. If that makes sense, I hope.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Just to clarify what our counsel, Mr. Duran, is, is saying. And I just want to clarify it, because he didn't really explain it, so I'm going to just put it this way. And you didn't understand it. So this is what he was asking. Right now, currently, if a private wants to do housing, it comes to us, we approve it. The only authority that you're going to, and the ability to deny or give, give an approval to is the El Paso Housing Authority, correct?
I, I'm not entirely sure, but it's possible.
Or is it just across the board? Because there are two different distinct, it's private and it's public. And that's the distinction that we're, we're asking. Is that we don't want to lose the ability to, for a private?
Understandable.
Right? That's what, that's what he...
When it comes to private, okay, the, the, nothing will be lost. I mean, that's a completely separate, yeah. So when it comes to, okay, when it comes to private development, this has nothing to do with that. I guess I only bring up the tax credits, because there is a potential, just like exists in the city of El Paso, for a public housing authority to compete for those, those tax credits. So right now, only private developers have the opportunity for those tax credits outside the city of El Paso. And so, so no, this does not impede at all over your current ability to approve anything on the private side.
That's, thank you for clarifying that, because that's what, that's what he wanted a clarification, whether we're not, you're not going to touch that area. You're just going to be able to do it on the El Paso Housing Authority.
And, and to be honest, I don't know, you know, all, all the nitty-gritty details of, you know, where the El Paso Housing Authority, who they'd have to get permission from. I mean, it could still be that if they're seeking a tax credit in your municipality, it could still be that they still have to get your approval. If not, if, if that's not the case, and if I'm wrong, well, then perhaps we can enter into an interlocal where, you know, just that it's clear that if there's ever a, a public housing entity that comes in that you all are dissatisfied with or don't want to approve, perhaps we can enter into some memorandum of understanding that if you all, you know, oppose it, then the Commissioners Court won't support it. I, I would support something like that.
Do we have a representative from the Housing Authority in the audience?
I'm sorry, I've been a little under the weather, so please excuse me. Everything Commissioner Perez has stated is correct. There was an amendment made last Thursday, and it was as the bill passed the, the House. It is now with the Intergovernmental Committee, with the Senate.
Ma'am, before you keep going, can you please let us know your name?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Sulema Avila. I'm the Executive Director for the El Paso County Housing Authority. Okay. We, as many of you may know, we have been in contact with Socorro. Yes, indeed, the County Housing Authority hasn't done anything in the last 35 years. I can't speak for previous board or previous management. I'm not sure why there wasn't a vision to grow and to expand, but the vision is there. We are working on our strategic plan as we speak. We are meeting with the small municipalities, requesting their input. We believe that the input of all municipalities is important when developing additional affordable housing. I do want to clear something up. Nobody is able, not a single housing authority in the United States is able to develop additional public housing. That was taken away in the 80s. So there is a possibility to develop additional affordable housing, but not public housing. Public housing, that allows for zero-income families to move in and not have to pay any portion of the rent. So I wanted to clarify that. With that being said, I, I do want to point out that, excuse me, I'm sorry. Back in, back in 2018, there is a need for affordable housing. The County Housing Authority is not saying that there is not a need for affordable housing. Where, what we are wanting is to conduct a needs assessment. What we have found out is that many of the families that leave the city of El Paso, they're looking for a single-family unit, not for another complex. As you know, you all recently are having developed two affor- two tax credit properties, right? And, and that's two traffic kind of homes. I don't know if you were aware, but Commissioner Perez wrote a letter to TDHCA opposing those, those affordable housings. And so the question is, if there is such a need, why would we oppose these affordable housing being developed? As a matter of fact, he mentioned that these would have, that there would be a traffic issue. And he even undermined it, the, the city's engineers, Socorro's engineer. In, in San Luis Ario, he's correct, there is several housing, several affordable housing units. They're tax credit properties. And so they are having a hard time filling up these, these units. There, there is a lot of affordable housing throughout the county of El Paso. To say that there is no affordable housing is, is not correct, because there is plenty of affordable housing in the county. We are not opposed additional, developing additional affordable housing. We admire everything the city Housing Authority has done. I know that we have a lot to learn from them. done. I know that we have a lot to learn from them. I myself used to work for them, and I admire everything that they've done. But they've entered into public-private partnerships, which we are allowed to do as well, and I'm in the process of speaking to private developers that are willing to jump on board. So it would not be 10 years before we would develop, we would be able to develop. Yes, it would not be immediately. We're looking at approximately two years. One of the things that we want to do our first year is to conduct a comprehensive housing needs assessment. Even the city of El Paso, it just recently added to their agenda to conduct a needs assessment. So there's been a lot of developing from north to south, east to west, but a need has never been done. And so when we develop, we want to develop, of course, with the input of the smaller municipalities, and after a needs assessment has been conducted. This House bill came about in February, and we didn't find out about it till April, as neither did Commissioners' Court, except for, I believe, Commissioner Bettis said he was aware since the beginning during one of the meetings. And so we're not saying, "Let's not develop additional housing," but let's, affordable housing, but let's develop with intention. What are the true needs of affordable housing? Is it just additional tax credit properties? Is it single-family units? Is it rehabilitation for homes that are already existing? You know, what can we do? There is a lot of resources out there aside from tax credit monies. And of course, the city housing authority would be able to tap into those monies too, if they expanded their jurisdiction. It is correct, if they expand their jurisdiction. It would currently not affect the operations of the county housing authority or the Anthony Housing Authority, but as Commissioner Bettis said, it is redundant to have, you know, a big housing authority and two smaller ones. And in conversation with HUD and our HUD field office director, this would force a merger in the future. And so, yes, it would not impact us immediately, but we're talking about a year, maybe more, two to three years, forced merger. We don't want to be the only ones. We are in agreement that for HACEP, the city housing authority, to come out and develop. But there is already legislature in place that allows them to do that. There is already something in place that allows them to come out and develop. Yes, the amendments do protect the Commissioners' Court's seat and voice and opinion. And so we were grateful for that, that that took place. But in the long run, it doesn't protect the Anthony Housing Authority or the El Paso County Housing Authority. We haven't, previous to our most recent executive director, who is no longer with us, there hadn't been any applications for additional funding of any kind. But as you all know, within these last two years, we've been moving forward, we've been striding forward. We've, as a matter of fact, we have a memorandum of understanding with the city of Socorro, and we're about to do the same with San Elisario. And so we are not just developing on, or wanting to develop based on what we think is needed. We want to, we want to develop on true needs. And, you know, we are believing that the ending result will be for the best of the constituents, and we are not opposing additional affordable housing. We, again, we admire everything the city housing authority has done within city limits. As Commissioner Bettis mentioned, you know, the Blue Flame building, and they have the Gonzales Place towards Montana Vista, and there's just a lot, they have developed a lot. And yes, we don't have the capacity right now, but we are in the process of building capacity, of entering into agreements with private investors that are willing to support us, and that are willing to enter into an agreement with us, just as HACEP has done. So I don't know if, yes, sir?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I have to, I have to...
I'm sorry, could I? Yes, sir.
Do you need some water?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Sure?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One, how long have you been in the county housing authority?
I've been at the county housing authority going on three years.
Three years.
Prior to that, I worked for the city housing authority for a year and a half.
Okay, three years. You just said that you wanted to work with the, with the small municipalities. You've been there for three years, and yet we haven't had a seat at the table to talk to you about the needs in the city of Socorro. That's one. The second one is, can you elaborate more on what is it, what do you mean by when you say it doesn't protect the county housing authority?
It would force a merger. Thank you, sir. Thank you. It would force, it would force a merger, because it would be redundant, it would be redundant to have, thank you, sir. It would be redundant to have a small housing authority when you have the second-largest housing authority already with the jurisdiction to operate in the whole county of El Paso.
So basically, you're talking about your livelihood.
I'm sorry, sir.
So basically, we're talking about not the housing authority, we're not talking about the needs of our constituency. We're talking about, what you meant about protection is about the employees of the housing authority.
No, it has nothing to do with that. I think all of us have, we have good careers. I myself, I have a degree. It would be easy for me to get a place of employment anywhere. It has, it has nothing to do with the jobs. We're all capable of obtaining new jobs. As a matter of fact, you know, when, when there was talk about the merger, yes, it was a discussion that was brought up, but within the staff and communication with the board, you know, we all knew that there was a high probability that we would lose our jobs, and we all had the understanding that, you know, just as in any other business, we would have to go and search elsewhere.
You know, the only concern I have, counsel, is, I understand, there is a need.
Yes, sir.
Like you say, I'm, I've been in San Elisario for 15 years, okay? I know that the development went up there, and I understand why. I passed through there almost every other day to go see my father-in-law, because we separated, and now I have my own, he has his own, but nevertheless, we're still there. And every time I go, and this is what I'm trying to explain, is that they're at capacity. They are at capacity. And there's a reason why they're at capacity, because there is a need. And there, that's what I was trying to tell our board, is that there is a need here in Socorro. There is a need in San Elisario. There is a need in Horizon, believe it or not.
Absolutely.
There's a need in between our cities, in Clint, in Montana Vista. And I understand that maybe you guys aren't able to. I get it, and I understand. But one of the things is, is that I don't understand that now that you're forced, because that's the way I see it, just, if you were in my shoes, that's what I see. I see that you're forced now, and now to make something, to say, "Hey, well, we're going to bring everybody together," when you already had three years, and were able to do it a year ago, six months ago. And yet, we're just bringing this out, because I, I love my city. I will fight for it tooth and nail. And yet, when it comes to projects, the city, I do my homework. And yet, none, none, since I've been here since 2013, nobody has approached us about putting housing, except private development, because they understand the need that we need here in the city. You know, I understand, but it goes back to, there is need. And we're not, we're not disputing that they're going to be able to one day, or that we are going to be able to do it on our own as well. But there's need. There is need. I just, I just, I just have an issue with that. That's basically it. I do have an issue. You know, I feel that, that this is just brought up because of what was happening, you know, the intention. I didn't see no intention prior to this. So I do have to take a look at this and see other options. You know?
May I? It's completely understandable, and I don't want, we are not being forced. The first year was a lot of, a lot of cleaning in the housing authority. When we came on board, even if you go back and you do a Google search on the El Paso County Housing Authority, previous two, three years, a lot of it was very negative press. And so when, when this new board, our new Board of Commissioners came on board, and a new administration came on board, the first year was ensuring that everything was in compliance, everything was in place, ensure that we were a high-performing housing authority, ensure that our audits were excellent. So our first year, it was house cleaning. Last year, which was our second year, we began to work on these things. And then July came around, and we were told about the merger, so our board decided to put everything on standby, because if we were going to invest, and the merger went through, then the investment would not be wise. Late January, early February, when we're told that the merger's not going to go through, when March comes around during our Commissioners' meeting, they passed a resolution to allow us to start working on our strategic plan and to start meeting with the municipalities. As a matter of fact, I was scheduled to meet with your city manager earlier today, but I was at the doctor for obvious reasons. So it's not because we are being forced. It has been in place, it has, it has been a vision. It's just been one thing of another after another that has held us back. This time around, we are not allowing this to stop us, and so we're going to move forward with our strategic plan. But I completely understand, and yes, sir, I agree with you, there is a need. There is a need. We're not debating that.
Mr. Duran?
Could you explain, there's a letter here, it says, "If bill becomes law, this would allow HACEP to develop anywhere in the county of El Paso without any oversight or accountability." How does that affect County Commissioners' Court, and how does that affect the city of Socorro?
Well, that was prior to the amendments. That was prior to the amendments, as Commissioner Bettis stated. Now with the amendments, they have, the city housing authority would have to conduct a needs assessment, would have to present through public comment, and Commissioners' Court would have the ability, if I understand that correctly, right, to approve a project or disapprove a project. Yes, sir. So that was prior to the amendment.
Also, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to also hear from our city planner as to how this would affect our city either way.
Excuse me, and thank you for the water.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in terms of my understanding of it, is that it would be in the best interest of the city to support the Commissioners' request. As part of the observations I've had over time is that I personally have not been contacted by that authority. And so as we move forward with master planning, one of the things I have to keep in mind now is that a lot of the development is coming through by private developers. So we have to work with them in the event that we want to introduce this type of housing. But understand is that, as a functionality of the structure of the city is in terms of the development, I am not aware of any communication between that authority and the city in terms of the development. We have been approached by private developers for tax credits, and I know that this body and previous bodies have approved that. But as it stands right now, I have not received any communication to move forward on that effect.
Ms. Ellos?
Mr. Bettis, I'd like to ask you, so if we were to deny this bill here today, both would be, would still be in existence. I mean, they can, you can coexist still as, as two different entities for the greater good of our cities?
I'm sorry, if you deny the agenda item as written and actually support the legislation?
Right.
That, yes, so very good point, yes. There's, again, in hearing everything she, the executive director had to say, there's nothing to lose by supporting, we have nothing to lose. If the city of El Paso comes in and does housing developments, great. This allows also the El Paso County Housing Authority to proceed with their strategic planning, to meet with you all. And if they do projects, great. There's absolutely nothing to lose with this legislation. The only reason that, you know, when Ms. Avila said that there was a potential for redundancy, well, the only reason that redundancy exists is because they didn't want to be merged with the El Paso County Housing Authority in the first place. I mean, so this is trying to alleviate, and again, it's a compromise, it's not perfect, but such is the nature of the legislative process. But again, I mean, again, I can't guarantee that, you know, this is going to result in, you know, again, the city of El Paso's housing authority is going to have to go through a process, the needs assessment and everything else, because the county housing authority raised that concern, that they wanted the needs demonstrated. But again, if a housing development comes, then great. I think that's the only, that's a benefit to our residents and the constituencies that we mutually represent.
And that's, and I think we're losing the focus right now, that this is for our constituents.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, there's a battle between these two entity, you two, not you two per se, but your firms. And we're losing the fact that we're here to protect our citizens, and we're trying to do the best that we can to protect our citizens and get them what they need in this city.
You're exactly right. And that's been my frustration, you know, since we took this, began this effort in 2013, it was precisely because there was a lack of services to the residents. Currently, no members of the board, except for one resident who actually has to be a resident from the housing authority, reside in the area that would be impacted, including my own representative, who had previous experience in Colonia, but didn't support this initiative. I mean, what does that say when, you know, nobody on the board, nobody who's opposing this legislation actually resides in the area that this would impact? I mean, I'm trying to look out for the people it is that I was elected to represent, and that's, that's been my focus from day one.
Thank you.
Mr. Bettis?
I have, and that's why it's just a comment, I have two concerns. And I think our responsibility is twofold, actually. Yes, to protect our residents, but also to look out for the best interests of the city. And my concern has always been, and will always be, the being steamrolled. And what I mean by that is, when a parcel land is identified as a potential housing project, or development, however you want to phrase it, and we don't have the authority to say, "Well, you know what, that's not within what we are planning for that area," or whatever the case may be, and we're, again, in effect, steamrolled, and we have no say as to whether or not that should be, we have no function in the approval process. And I think that's where my concern is.
Yes.
And I want to make sure that, again, my responsibilities to my constituents and to the city is, yes, make sure that we have affordable and dignified housing, but at the same time, that we are able to protect the interests of the city and its development, and be able to control that as well.
Yes. So Mayor Protem, just to be clear, again, if the county housing authority wanted to do a project, unfortunately, there is no approval process from you all. They could do it.
Right.
Under this proposal, there does exist a mechanism where we could veto that. Again, I wouldn't act contrary to your all's interest if you all were opposed to a particular parcel. And again, if we want to formalize that more with a memorandum of understanding, or some sort of interlocal agreement, I'd be open to that. So that way, you know, I think that's the best that we can, and I think that's the benefit of this legislation, that we have that oversight.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We have a speaker, Mary Abcros.
First, thank you, Commissioner Bettis, for coming out. Mr. Duran, Mr. Bettis, thank you for asking questions that were running around my head. To your point, Mr. Bettis, I make the following proposal. Why not vote, make a motion to approve a letter of support with the suggestion of an amendment to this legislation? Or, like Mr. Bettis just said, Commissioner Bettis said, you know, with the condition that the county enter into memorandum exactly what he just mentioned. Why not just do that? And that way, we do get a seat at our table, not just Commissioner Bettis and the county, because the other rest of the commission, the county commissioners could vote, you know, for it, for whatever reason, because they're not in the area, they don't care enough, whatever it may be. At the end of the day, Commissioner Bettis has only one vote. And so if we can maybe, you know, tie in exactly what he just said, I think that might help us move along. Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And if I may just respond to that, if you would have asked me two weeks ago, I thought this legislation was dead, and I wouldn't be here for you today. The danger with suggesting an amendment at this late in the game is that Sinodai, the final day to consider new legislation, is May 22. And I think the chances of, so this is already passed the House. I think the chances of it actually getting amended at this point, going back to the House, and then going back to the Senate is very slim in approval. But I do think that any sort of interlocal where, you know, between the city and the county is entirely doable. And there's no, there's no limitation on time for that.
Thank you.
One question. Ms. Ellos, do you have any other municipalities that have interlocal agreement?
No, because they weren't necessary, because we've never had, you know, this bill has not taken effect, and so we've never been in a situation where we would need to do that. But I suspect if this were to pass, and the reason why your support is so critical is that, again, I think, you know, that there's concerns, there've been concerns expressed originally by Commissioners' Court, who voted this down, the county housing authority, who's been opposed to it. So you can imagine, the senator's, he's going to look to what you all, you know, say. And that's why your all's input is very significant. But, no, we currently don't have any interlocals, because this would be a completely new thing. So if the legislation is passed, it would be the first-time opportunity to create those interlocals. Thank you.
And we are trend setters.
No, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Again, the whole intent of this has just been to provide a federal public housing presence, you know, where there hasn't been one, you know, unfortunately, during the entire time that you all have been incorporated as a city, and for the 35 years that the housing authority's been in existence.
You had said that the county commissioners, what was the vote on this item?
Unanimous. Unanimous.
Unanimous?
Yes. And again, when it, when it died back in January or February, there was only four of us present, and it died on a two-two vote. It was me and the county judge in favor of the legislation, which again, would have just enabled them to operate. This was before this amendment, and then Commissioner Leon and Commissioner Stout voted it down. This amendment addressed the concerns that were raised by Commissioner Leon and Commissioner Stout, and it was voted unanimously on Monday.
Ms. Lurano?
Jim, can I ask a question, Jim, and then, could we, could I amend my motion to, to deny this letter and to make a letter for?
Resend it, no?
Yeah, yeah. I could resend it and then make the motion?
Yeah, you can always resend your motion. And if I gather, if I perceive the council's discussion correctly, the appropriate motion would be to approve a letter supporting House Bill 2287.
And sending it to the office of Jose Rodriguez, our senator. That would be my motion.
So why don't you resend the first?
Yes, I'll resend my motion, and then send a letter, I'll recommend to send a letter to our state Senator Jose Rodriguez to supporting the HB 2287, I believe?
Second.
And I'm sorry, at a later time, we will do a?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Ms. Lurano?
I.
Mr. Nevares?
Yes.
Doctora?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
I.
And Ivan Colomvialo.
And do we have a deadline on that letter? On, do we have a deadline, Ms.? So it's something we have to come back and vote on?
No.
Okay. But how about the inter-local agreement?
That's after.
Once.
I'm sorry, I heard everybody. What was that?
Probably, I guess, if it's subject to passage, I guess, because this bill could still fail.
Okay, got it. All righty. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez.
I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you for the education. We appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to go ahead and bring up Item 24. I know that we've got people crazy waiting.
Ms. Lurano?
I.
Mr. Nevares?
Yes.
Doctora? Yes.
Victor Perez? I.
Yes.
Item number 24, discussion and action on the plat approval for Socorro High School being all of tracks 21B, 22B, 23A, 23C, 24A, 24B, and a portion of tracks 23B and 23D, block eight Socorro grant.
Go Bulldogs, sir.
Go?
Go.
I heard that. I heard Cocoa Puffs. Do we have motion?
Motion to approve set tracks?
Second.
Good evening again. Mike Mina, I'm the city planner. As a point of clarification is that part of the backup here is that there was a, an approval by the department to approve this plat. However, at the commissioner level, it failed to pass a motion. So what is before you is showing the illustration that the city, excuse me, the school district has acquired in its relationship to the reconstruction of the high school. The plat is before you would be in totality this. So they would be merging these two land uses. As they stand right now, the functionality here is that the one that they just purchased, which is on the lower right-hand side, it has setbacks that in accordance to their proposed development would impede on those setbacks. So the rationale here is, the appropriate step is to replat the entire property and move forward with the proposal.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Jim, if we do this, could we also put something in it so that we can expand Rio Vista on some certain areas?
What do you mean expand?
Okay, could we zoom in on the area on the road, a little bit to the right, that way? No, no, the other way, on the road, on the road. Yeah, you're, yeah.
That is it.
Right there, in front of, in front of Idea School, go a little bit to the tracks? Okay. Right there, where that little car is at, more or less, that little car, going on to the right, it turns into two, two lanes.
Right.
So we would, what I would ask, Jim, if it would be all possible, if we do approve it with the contingency, that they give us a little bit more of right-of-way, so that we can expand into a future?
Two lane.
Two lanes on going north and southbound?
Four, four lane.
Or to widen the street?
It's complicated. I'd suggest you probably want to go into executive session to address that.
Okay, can I, can we do that, guys, please?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So could we amend our motion? I'll amend my motion, I mean, I'll resend my motion and make a motion to? Oh, okay, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
Do we have motion to go into executive?
At this point, just for consultation for the attorney on expansion questions, I'll go ahead and resend my motion, my motion and make a motion to go into executive.
Second.
Ms. Lurano?
I.
Mr. Nevares?
Yes.
Doctora? Yes.
Victor Perez?
I.
Yes. Seven thirty-six. We're now in executive session?
Five minutes?